Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our Council meeting for the City of Nelson September the 14th, 2020. Starting off with a water prayer. Holy God, we thank you that you're in the midst of all things, Lord. We just ask that you would lead, guide, and direct this council, myself, tonight, and all decisions that we make. We ask that you would be with our fire department, our EMS teams, our soldiers overseas and here. Father God, we ask that you would lead them, guide them, direct them, protect them, and keep them safe, Father God, and our police as well. Lord, we just ask this, amen. Amen. Pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion for the agenda. I'll say it.
Call the paper. Yes, thank you. Public appearance. And I'll go ahead and let you come on. Come on.
All I want to do is not take down the work of the Lord. And what I give for us, and I know in no words a matter of equipment needs to come before the city council or not, but surveyor, detective guys, we just come and survey here and make use of wire. We've had a property line that went through the residence on Ray Mountain Road for many years.
Mr. Ray, could you give us the address for that, please?
The address is 1685 Ray Mountain Road. And my sister and her husband live next door. And years and years ago, I've had on all three parcel. And brother was building the house that I'm in. And when the builder showed up, he said, "Put it right there." He owned all of three lots. So it didn't make any difference where he put it. Since then, of course, my sister built a house back down here, and I put in a garage that I moved from up into airport project. So we've had a, it's never been a fuss and fight, but we need to, they were, the way this survey came up, she ordered a survey on her dad's property, or her dad over there. And when that came down to survey, of course, they discovered that the line did have to go through the house. We've known it for many years. And the, we knew we was going to have to deal with it sometime. Now, I don't know where she, her husband, her George, his health is declining, he may, he may go somewhere else to, maybe live with her at some point, which is a tough task. Anywhere, it may come up for sale or whatever. We needed to straighten out the encroaching. And we're not talking about changing the meets and bounds. We're just talking about changing the orange line, the way the property has been since 1953, when they surveyed the city of Nelson. And the green line would clear up any problem as far as property. And both parties, me and my sister's widower, and his daughter, and myself, and my daughter, which means we own this house here jointly, we've come to an agreement that this is the way we want it to be. It's not affecting any outside boundaries. It does, it comes right up to the road, but there's a stone marker there. And if you looked at it, you would think that it works right down through that line, but you don't look at it like that. You've got to look at how it actually goes. And like I said, when Daddy told him to put the house here, he owned all three. And that was 45 years ago. Would he, I'd like to ask, need to ask him questions or anything?
Is I going to put the house inside city limits or is it putting the house outside city limits?
The...
The city limits don't change.
I know, but I mean, it's like, with the line is that putting the house...
The house is in or out no matter what, right? I mean, it looks like the house right now is half in, half out. It would stay half in, half out. It's just that the property line will change.
And I will, now, this line right here is city limits.
Because the orange line is not city limits?
No.
No, that's the property line.
That's the property line between...
Because it says city of Nelson, incorporated Pickens County. So this makes it look like it's the city limit line, too. I don't know.
It certainly does. I agree with you on that, Jeff. But you know, that, you know, my house, which is next door here, you know, I've always paid property taxes, and it has been acknowledged as a city limits. But my sister, she never was in the city, except that she was in the city. She had fought so tough in there, we tried to tell her some was. At any rate, we're just, we're not changing the outside meets and bounds of the flat or the layout of the original flat, which was done by a surveyor back in 1953. And he surveyed the whole city in Nelson, the whole Pickens County.
Did they think the city, did somebody think the city needs to do something to approve it or anything?
No, no, just, I just want to make, maybe make you aware, or...
They'll change it.
And if you, if you would, if you could instruct a clerk to, if it comes down to signing off on it, that I came up, she could just stand it?
On the flat.
On the flat.
Gotcha.
And what I'm going to do, I'm going to get with RW Howard, he's a surveyor that surveyed. And he told me, just to keep from having any problems, what I'm going to do is be sure that we don't get anybody stirred up or anything like that. We're just trying to correct something that's been there for years and years and years. So would you authorize the city clerk to make a note on the...
The only, and I don't know what it's...
I pulled, I think it's R40 is what I pulled it up. That's what we were looking at earlier today.
Is the .94 acre the whole thing? Or that is one of these?
No, .94 is actually the, the one, if you're looking straight down, or it may be the right, that's .94 acres. It's in, that .94 remains the same, and whatever mine it is, remains the same. We're just going to take so much from the .94, and I've got a wall that I've constructed many, many years ago, that's, he's going to come on that backside of that wall and put the line right down alongside that wall, and he's going to kick it between the two houses for the, actually, the mobile home. That wall, to my dollar, it was...
So he'll just draw the line?
Yeah, he's just going to draw the line. And I apologize for not having it done, but we've been trying to get it surveyed. Surveys are all covered up. You can't get anything done. You're probably well aware of that. And you can't talk to him on the phone. And one night, he told me that he was going to stay out there and waste the problem, looking down transit while they were doing it.
And since the acreage doesn't change, I don't think it's an issue at all?
I don't either, do you? The only question I do have is, because this had come up with some stuff that was on the Cherokee side, is you can't have a parcel that's partially in and partially out. So would that then change the city limit boundaries?
It doesn't change the city limit boundary. You can have a parcel that's in and out. I mean, it's not a good idea, because it's weird, but legally, it's everywhere.
Okay.
Those exist in the world. You just have to, it's really a taxing issue. You decide whether to tax it or not.
Yeah.
If it's just a little bit in, usually you don't. If most of the property is in the city limits, you do tax it.
I mean, I don't care whether or not, I just want to make sure that it's dotted, teed, or crossed.
And you know, like, the city of Nelson is a circle around the pen over here beside where the old Georgia Marlin, that's how, that's how it all came to be. It was a half-mile circle around that pen. That's before Laurel Lake and before everything that's gone out and, you know, that's been, has been changed correctly over the years. And usually, you know, a surveyor, you're used to when, you know, when you decided you want to put it in a road, you're just going to put it right there. And that's caused many problems because if it wasn't surveyed, that road, that goes down, you know, down on top of your ridge, down in the bog, around about all the water take up there. You know, we had a hectic time with the meets and bounds of that, because, you know, all the houses sprang up before anybody worried about property. You know, property wasn't worth that much anyway, you know? So if there's a road going down through there, and of course, I worked with county government for many years myself, and have seen all the stacks and stacks and stacks of roadway deeds that are just thrown into the corner, or people, back in the 50s, allowed the roads to, many times gave right away. But back in the old days, and I'm not saying that's right, back in the old, old days, you follow a pig trail or a cow's trail, and that's right on top of the ridge, it was really easy to do that through there. As long as we didn't get on Martha's property.
I'll check the ordinance to make sure, but I think if it stays an equal acreage, I don't believe it would be...
I didn't think it was going to fall into like what I'm going to do with Jody's, but that's what I wanted, just making sure.
That property would maintain the same acreage?
Yeah, that's what I thought. I'll double-check and rather ask the questions than ask them.
Yeah, I'll make sure. And I guess they'll draw the line, and then they'll probably send it here to get it settled.
Well, I'll first bring it up here, too, and you have to see if you give her permission to stamp on it that it was presented to the city council, and if you want to vote over it. And I apologize for not being able to get on your agenda, but...
I don't think you'll have to.
I don't think, I mean, I knew it was, this came up, we had to do it because it was a...
Right, change the acreage.
Yeah.
We determined it's fine, but you could just sign off on it, so that should be done.
Okay, I certainly appreciate it. Appreciate y'all's help.
Thank you. Anybody else for public appearance? Let's move on. Number six, public hearing for John and Shannon Kegel. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I acknowledge you have a public hearing for John Kegel.
Could I sit here?
I'll say it.
Call the paper. Yes, thank you. Okay. Ms. Kegel, are you ready?
I am good. Do I need to get up to it?
You can, if you have something you want to, something you want to go over with, or if you just want to outline what you have here.
Well, that's all. I just, I just need my place rezoned, you know, so I can divide my property and have two, make two properties of it. And that way, I'll be able to keep one and sell one.
So you're going from R40 to R20?
Yes. It certainly won't be any big development there.
I've called a couple people here, putting in a strip mall.
It would be nice, or at least your country store.
I was a little excited.
Is there anybody else who would wish to speak in favor of that application? Is there anybody that wanted to speak in opposition to the application?
I had several people call, and anyone had the issue. I had several people call and ask what, who saw the sign, and once they heard what it was, it was like, okay, it wasn't, it didn't seem to be...
Everything's already says to, right now, the way it is, it's just a minor emergency line. They're putting a line that they're drawing to do.
And I think we thought that would have been done years ago, it just wasn't the technicalities when called it through to actually split the parcel.
And I'm helping, oh, yeah, I mean, I've got a survey, and everything that I brought to, we have the other one there, it's just a waiting for...
And she had already surveyed to split it, where it was divided with the east end of the pathway.
In the public hearing portion, shall we all discuss anything?
Anybody have any questions, council? Any questions on this? Can I get a motion to approve parcels for public hearing?
I acknowledge you have a public hearing. I'll say it.
Call the paper. You don't understand. All right. Now, let's get that. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, variance for this day will change for R40.
From R40 to R20. I'll say it.
Call the paper. Yes, thank you. Done here? Thank you, maybe? All right. Number seven, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August the 17th, 2020?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for August the 17th.
Can I get a second?
Say it.
Call the paper. You don't understand, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to approve that August the 26th, 2020, minute minutes?
Make a motion to approve the August 26th minutes.
Next second. Call the paper. You don't understand, thank you. Next up is Department of Reports. Lieutenant Simmons' report, Kelsey, if you want to go over that.
And we've got a lift, 10 calls in August, one alarm call, two suspicious person calls, one for information, and one string of immigrants.
Miranda, could you check with Johnny Craig and see if we can get a, some type of report, please? I don't know if I asked him, and he's not going to do it. He's not gotten anything yet. Next up is Mayor's Report, and I think I left my thing on the table. I think I forgot that. I almost forget something.
We're going to be finding our boundary for the mayor's report.
Yeah, she usually just talks about it, and she just got a date and memory, and so we've been, it's pretty rough, and I have to, we also have a lot of things pending.
Yeah, we thought that, like, the truck part of it, there were pairs that was done, so it was going down, it was kind of, it's like, I think, they call this, what, someone took a class, and it was, 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 it[1278.12] One of the other things that we have seen some of is some drug activity down there. We do need to think about it our next meeting. I'm looking for you guys to take a walk down there or ride down there, take a look. We need a couple of extra cameras, one for the back and also one facing in the opposite direction. So it seems like people that are causing the most trouble in doing the, having the drug activity, they know where the cameras are at. We also need to look at another camera down at our trail. So you guys don't mind just take a look at some of that.
We talked to a few of them on the streets, a man's on the street that go that way. Just some, and not obviously going to people's houses, but just.
The street.
We had an incident in our house this weekend, or last week. I was able to track the guy, sat on the cameras, but there was just dead spots that you can't find them. But there's areas that people know where the cameras are. And if you can't track them, there could have been two houses that weren't broken into, if you could have.
You might get a two houses, I mean, first one's, that would be the third one.
Yeah, we stopped the one in one house, but.
At the dumpster, yeah.
That's what Sylvie and I talked about.
So what we'll do is we'll get a, we'll get an estimate for the upgraded software in those cameras. Take a look, as council members, you guys, take a look around the city, think about what we might need. And then we can come back and discuss it at our next meeting. The other thing is, we had a maintenance guy resign. And then we brought another guy in and it was a little bit much for him. So we were able to find another one. So we have, we have another maintenance guy this week. Today's his first day, so he's a, it seems like a. Yeah. So we'll see how he works out. We put him on a 30-day, a 60-day probation with a 30-day review.
I think you will work it out.
He seems, Ricky seems alike in, so he seems to have pretty good work ethic from his previous job. He's able to give references and stuff, so. I think that is it for me. We'll go to, move on to item D, to Mr. Prager. Mr. Prager, if you want to come forward and do your Cherokee fire business.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to come for you here. I think you've already got a copy of the second quarter report. For the second quarter here in Nelson, we only had 16 calls. And that was the second quarter this year that we had not had any fires. So that's good report. We had nine EMS incidents, one false alarm, and then six other calls for service. And that can be the worst, if somebody popped the floor or something, so. A lot of cost per service, so.
Can I ask what your response time was on those EMS calls?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
The, the average was 927, I believe it is, before we came up with, you know, the 90 percentile, 1157. So average is 927. And I'd say no fires. And that's something we're wanting to improve on across the county. Right now, we have a, it's a struggle to accurately track that. Right now, there, our CAD is supposed to go live, I think, in November, bringing the CAD to 911 Center. We've got new radios coming in. We'll start installing those next month, I believe. Then right after the first of the year, we're hoping to have a new alerting system for the fire department. To have a place to have track our alerting from the time we pick up the phone at the 911 Center to the time our guys are turning in at the fire station. Then our travel time, till we'll get it more accurate. Fixing laws going on and that. Right now, it's all manual operation. If you've ever been at 911 Center, it's all manual. So with the new system between the radios and the CAD and then our alerting system, it's more automated than ever before. So we're hoping to track that a lot better. I mentioned last time I came before y'all that we're planning on getting our accreditation. We're working hard. That's a, the word I use, that's booger. It's just, we're hoping to go in front of the board, be it the end of next year, or the first bad access in August next year, or the center. So part of that is, we've had to develop our benchmarks. So everything's based on the 90th percentile. So average is just over half. So our benchmark is to try to get response times in that 90th percentile. So a lot of planning to go into that. We're working on strategic planning right now as well. It's talking, Mr. Ray earlier, he asked about a fire station here. So in our next SLOs, we're starting to get our data to get in now for our next SLOs. And we can identify five stations to replace and build, and we're going to put a new station here. And we'll start promoting that 2023 SLOs, and that's what we're going to do. So we'll be looking for property and start hoping to plan for that with the next legislature. I don't think I'll be here that much longer, but, but we'll at least get started on knocking in. So if there's any questions about the second quarter report?
Councilman, you have any questions?
Also, I brought the annual report to you. Kelsey.
Yes, I have a lot going on.
So that's last year before this COVID. It's a good, it slowed everything down, had us working hard. And I hope to bring you the report here, make it toward the end of the year, when I report the fourth quarter, what we did with COVID with our employees. So I got word this morning, one of our employees has been hospitalized, he's dealing with him. So we've been lucky up until this morning with our own employees. I think we've had about a dozen that's been affected with positive test results. Overall, for 130-plus employees, we've done pretty good so far, so.
Yeah, your odds are good.
Same.
So your odds are good.
Yes, we hope to keep it that way.
Well, we appreciate you coming out and bringing this to us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miranda, finance report. Give to you.
It's okay.
The most exciting part of the budget.
Because I were drawing all over my paper.
All right, so at the end of August, we are looking at 87% remaining on our overall budget. We should be at, we should be 87% or less, and we are at 83%. So.
We're good.
It should be, well, actually it should be 83% or less, and we're at 87. So there you go. Yeah. I done wrote it down. Let me look my paper again.
We're 4% to the good.
Yes, yes, we got 4% to the good. That is it. Okay, yeah, so we're at 87%. So we should definitely be at 83% or more. That's good. And other than that, that's all I got. Y'all covered the cares. We did receive that revenue for that state grant, so that's great. Really, it's only the second month, so there's not really much happening.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. Do you have any questions for Miranda? We'll look towards your. Next up is going to be unfinished business. Discuss and vote on bush hogging and drain cleaning. So Kelsey, I know you've done the homework on that, and you've gotten us some.
This is Cherokee that came out and looked and said, this crisis to come in and just all the drains and the trucking stuff in town. So it said basically, you'd really need two guys. You have, down the bottom, you have the price of the two guys. And he said, worst case scenario, I did the email in here, so there wasn't any misconstrued, because we were looking back and forth for a while. Worst case scenario was a week, but he said it does not think it would take that long. He said there was going to be some that we could be done, you know, that it would, prices weren't there for that as well. It wasn't ever like a completely clear price, which is why I'm trying to put everything out there. That you're going to end up needing, if you have two guys, you're going to need two machines. But he said he doesn't think that you're going to need a mini excavator and a skid steer. But it was still kind of up in the air, more or less. They couldn't really tell until they get in here and know exactly what they're dealing with. But their price, this is the county prices.
I heard about it, Rachel, really big, didn't it?
Do I?
No, I didn't think really big.
Yeah, they were, I think they were fena rates or something. And if they're basically just paying a hospital sleeper. He said, if you want the truck, a pilot truck, then that's what the rates are for it. And I think that if we did that, the only place you'd need it would be out on Five. I can't see fully needing it anywhere else, because you just wanted to do it. But I know there's drains that would definitely need to get cleared out, and there's definitely some bush hogging that needs to take place.
I hope you have a really good deal.
Well, even like the side, even like on Fremont, when you get there, it was closing in. And I had a guy's one, I've been cleared out a whole bunch of it, but it was just that they can get initially, it's not really cutting back to really get it taken care of. And it hasn't been done in years, so I think they've all done it by some.
We don't have a real price, I mean, but I mean, I don't think we're getting the last thing cheaper.
You're not going to get anything cheaper, not from, I mean.
If they leave pilot car, I mean, 40 hours a day, that's not that bad to have somebody going on for safety.
Yeah. Yeah, well, he was just saying, like in the meeting, even at the end right there, it was knowing, it's just a fena rate. You could add a pilot guide truck, and knowing in that rate, it's 1278. He estimated everything on 40-hour week, but honestly, it wouldn't take us that long to know the return of all the streets. That's doing everything.
You're looking at $1,000.
Worst case scenario.
That's worst case. And if he says you don't need, if you don't need both a mini excavator and the, and the skid steer, you're.
I think it's going to be a lot less than that. Probably around 7. Clean and not being. Worst case scenario, it won't be that much.
Yeah, I don't think we'll find nothing like that.
No, I think that's really good, honestly, so I need to send my bill, thank you, Matt.
Or stay.
Yeah, or stay. So can I, can I, does anybody have any questions before we vote on this?
How much do we need to approve for?
Um, I'm going to say 10, if we do 10,000, I don't think it's going to be any more than that. It'll be less, it'll be, it's one, he said one or the other, but worst case scenario, it'll be 10,000.
And that's for the bush hogging and the drains, right?
When y'all got Ricky, Ricky probably knows where all the spots is and that's.
Well, they had a study for all the drains. So we, Mike had one actually came down and brought a copy of that, and I sent that to them. So they used that to go back out and find all the drains and stuff. And then, so they, I mean, they used all the studies and stuff that they were part of.
Like crazy, wow.
Yeah, they said for all the streets.
And they said they clean the paths out to.
That's what they said. Because there was a crisis to run up together, because it was, and Mike had been part of that too. It was kind of like agreeing to clean the drains out, go into the fish hole and then, because that kind of contributes to the drains being wanted to begin with.
So one hour, maybe eight together.
Yeah. And you can get the bush hogging done, and you know, you're basically solving two problems at one time.
Can I get a motion to approve 10,000 budget for bush hogging and drain cleaning?
Make a motion, approve 10,000 budget for drain cleaning and bush hogging, SLOs, Cherokee County.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, discussing about a property tax rule. Again, Kelsey has been on this, and I remember for her due diligence and living behind that computer, trying to figure out exactly what's what.
Oh, that's crazy.
Yeah. So, Kelsey, if you would, go ahead and.
These are the ones we talked about, these are just personal property taxes, votes, machinery. But these are not the ones from the issue, except for one. And now the two, the guy actually moved out of town and then passed away. So we have nothing forwarding addresses or anything to get a hold of them. And it was, I think it was the one that was for like $11 or $30. It was in Illinois now. The other ones were people that had lived here and thought we knew. So the one that's 1400 was one that I talked to James about. The guy has not lived here in like, I don't know, like 10 years.
Six.
But it just, you keep getting penalties and entries, and it just sits in the system and it keeps accruing. And it's sitting on there as all these past due taxes that for somebody that doesn't even live here.
These are your personal property.
These are, all of these are, we pulled those out specifically for that reason. So other people come in and are like, look, I haven't even owned a boat for the year that I'm getting taxed on. I was having one for like 2012 to 2015, maybe. So it's ones that you're not really getting money out of anyway, even if you pursue it. And then at that point, by the time you send the postage and everything, except for that's, one of them is $2.30. I mean.
And if they're over 500, something can actively pursue it.
Actively pursue it and like that, yeah.
Listen, the whole 100, yeah, they were 500.
Oh, it was from early 2000, maybe 2006, 2007. Most of that's penalty interest.
That's on dump trucks and that.
Who doesn't, he hasn't lived here. I don't even know if he lived here, and that was when it was on there. I think they started taxing them after he moved out, so it just kept accruing. So I mean, the itemization board is on the next page. I just didn't want to put which ones, that starts like minimum down.
Who's going to vote to authorize you to cancel those out?
Yeah, the auditor just said that I have to have council approval for these. The one, there's some that were write-offs that I, like, people had paid them. I could go out and find them, pay them in the system, or if they want to pay. So ones that I can track and find receipts, I'm not worried about, but ones like this, it would just, I mean, I'm, you know, I could look at the money flow, if they didn't live here or whatever. It's just a nuisance.
This will be the solid of the day.
Oh, no.
This is the, this will do some serious cleanup in the system by getting rid of those parcels, because that's not even normal parcels. Because it's personal property.
Yeah, that's the personal ones. These, the ones here, some of them, we've gone after a bunch of them. And some other people just go ahead and pay. There's still, there's some of them that have credits or just, and those I want to go in and dig a little bit on. Because there was one that somebody paid, it was a utility company, it's like $1100. They had paid, and then somebody went in and credited it back, like $800 or something. I don't know if it's this one, or the ones in all those. They, they had been given this huge credit on it. But when you go in and look at it, it didn't make sense. So it's one of those, until you know for sure it's a real credit, I'm not going to, you know, give it back. If it's a real credit, then absolutely, you can go after it. They were a utility company. And some of them, deep look at parcel numbers. Everything on Cherokee's side has two parcel numbers. So those are fine. So these, the ones that on this list, I know are just, you're not going to ever get mine from. And there was that, most of them have been, the ones that are original, you can't find them, that stuff comes back, is returned undeliverable. If someone's deceased, or whatever. There were a couple from this past year that I didn't fit in here, and they will just go through 2019, and I'm not writing all points for 2019.
I'm making a motion, we approve the $143.87.
Give me a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Yes, thank you. All right, discussing sanitation services. I put up this report table, we have, we're just putting this back on there.
Just food for thought, especially coming up next year. Because we got, our trash trucks coming back, and they've finished the repair job and the backend that it's supposed to be going back on. But we've talked about making it mandatory to use city service. And if we're going to do it, this is kind of the ideal time, because otherwise, all the companies that are in town, they're picking up trash, hopefully regulatory fees to city, $400. Have to send those back out, and you have to fight them to get them. Right now, I think we have five companies that are paying it, if I remember correctly, which is roughly $2,000. I know there are at least three other companies in here picking it up, that is smaller top companies, and I can't figure out who they are, because there's no labels on the vehicles. They come in in a pickup truck with stuff on there, and, anyway. Most cities require that you use their service, it cuts down on lower interior roads, and it's also revenue source for the city. And our costs are actually a lot less than most of the mainstream service providers are. So with that said, our current sanitation worker is willing to do the entire city. So we kind of have an opportunity to implement this.
This is something we don't have to vote on today, but we can take a look at. And I think in long run, it would save the city money, because we don't have all those trucks coming in here tearing our road up. Laurel Lake's an example, we're spending $26,000 to repair those roads, and it's just, you know, it's not, yeah, it's mainly big trucks, causing those issues. So be thinking about that.
When they, when they came in and talked to us about our truck, they did tell us that if we were ever going to do that, that you need two trucks. We need a truck and a backup truck, like the current one that's in good shape, which we've just always wanted to do it. And they said, you know, buy a new truck and have it as your working truck, and have the other one as a backup truck. So this one, I've been ready to go. This is a price for one with the car tippers and everything on it, ready to go. The prices for carts, I believe the ones he quoted, you need about double that. So it would be roughly 32, 33,000, because that was for the cart customers at the time. And this is if you wanted to add the cart tippers to the old truck, which isn't the only possibility. But is, can we slash money for that?
For the carts?
For the truck.
And the truck?
Absolutely. That's what I thought.
I was going to say, I think that we've got, we've got.
There.
We've got, would it come under roads and streets, or would it come under?
You could do it under roads and the streets. Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
So this may not be, a second trip may not be something we want to purchase this year, we may want to wait until next year. But we do have funds from both sides, roads and streets, from both sides.
And you've got general government out of Cherokee's side, so either way.
We've got money, we've got money coming in to do, we've got a million eight and a million six.
I would do a similar rather than later, because I know that the current sanitation workers will to do this now. If it's something that we're going to implement, you know, if you have a different job, that the situation isn't what it currently is, a different.
It's able to refine, we will have insurance.
I've talked to him about that, about that, and we have talked to, we've been talking about that too. See if there's a way for us to take that off one of the counties, because there's only a couple of points that we need to do.
And I've talked about it several times, but piggybacking.
We just can't quite get a straight answer.
Right. I mean, we need to make it 100% sure things we want to do and be able to do.
I know, and I've had several very interested. But, I said, don't want to miss an opportunity.
Jeff Morton, he, we've discussed this with him, and he was going to go back and get us.
He wants us to talk to Jerry.
He's going to go back and get us an answer as well, and I'll reach out to Jerry and see if he's gotten some. Another thing that we need to think about if we're doing two trucks is going to be a land, a piece of land, and a metal building to put these things in. So be thinking about that, and where that could be, or if we could trade some property out, maybe that we have here.
What we have working in the land right there.
That cross road from the maintenance building now, will they park it? Could we not put a shed? You don't really need to put a garbage truck in a hand clump area, because it gets us stinking, it's a bad, we can't stand.
Yeah.
But a shed, could we not put one across the road from maintenance?
At the top of the hill, would you not put, like a, like you said, a shed just with a four post and open at the bar?
Probably, but clearly we could go up on the hill up here, like the top part of that.
Even next to the stair company out there, there's land out there that people keep nibbling around. Nobody does anything, because there's some weird drainage thing that's interfering with everybody's plans to do stuff. But that was originally a whole industrial park, which I didn't know. James and I were looking at the plans the other day, because somebody else came in and was asking about it. There was a road and everything that went and connected back down to the, to Five, and I don't know. There's several areas there that aren't near residential areas, because I know that that's, there's been several people that have said things that, I would want a car next to my house.
Yeah, it'd be nice if it was outside of town.
Well, you're going to have the rodents and everything else. So, I mean, you have people that complain about where it is now, and if you move it, you're going to have people complaining.
I know, out there in the river property, that'd be.
You move it anywhere near my house, you're going to have a big.
No, I'm talking about.
The face of the hill, there you go.
From the staircase.
Yeah, yeah.
We can check if there's any.
The lot next to the, is that for sale?
Which one?
The one on the other side of the stair company, the industrial area. Because there's been a couple of people looking at it, but there's a weird drainage thing right in the middle of it, that every time somebody looks at it, it kind of screws up whatever the plans are for it. But if we're just putting like a shed thing to park vehicles, it might work. I don't know if they're asking for it, but it's.
Let's do a little research, which will now and then, we can get some process. I mean, we could buy a second truck after the first of the year, we could go ahead and implement if we wanted to, full-time. Our mandatory.
Send out some letters and see what people respond, if they furnish some trash cans or.
That's the main, main reason people want the city service, because of the cans.
That's what I was about to say, I remember that, that was a big huge.
That was why we switched back, people really.
I'll do an email, I'll do one of those email flyers, I've got a template for that. Do an email flyer, and just put that on there and ask for feedback to be given back in the year. Because if we start accepting the fees, and that's for a year, or in the bucks, and that starts to weigh in really, really tall for the city.
Is it, is it possible to get by with a smaller second truck? Less expensive, smaller second truck?
I think this is the smallest thing, well, 11, 11 feet was the one before, 11 yards, and I think this.
The one Jasper has, I think, is smaller, I think it's the one.
I've seen the other, yeah, it was a little flyer one night. Yeah, it's a little cap.
I just don't know how much it holds and how many cars they have to run to the dump. It's, honestly, I would talk to Stephen about it, because Stephen probably has a better idea of how much.
What's right here on the roads, that's more.
Yeah.
I was just, I mean, if you got the big truck and then a smaller one to go, I was just, just an idea.
Yeah, well, the guy said that some cities will buy smaller trucks, and you can come and dump it in a bigger one, and keep compacting it, and it took the bigger one to the dump.
But if he's working more hours too, I mean, he could make another trip to the dump once a week or something.
It definitely wasn't, I'm talking to him about it.
Get rid of the trash. Let's do a score.
Let's be thinking about that, and think about the ideas, as we, like she said, regulatory fees are coming up in January, and they're for a year. So maybe we can have a decision by November, or what do we want to pursue that? And I think, I personally think it's a good idea.
Everybody that mentioned it to you, except for it is something we should definitely do.
Other cities are doing it as well.
And how, how many, if everybody in the city said, yeah, how many garbage service, how many trash cans would that pay?
I think during the 2010 census, we had 510 residences, thereabouts. I think we currently have, I think we're currently servicing 230 customers, thereabouts. So be a little bit more than double what they're currently doing.
Basically, it'd be a full-time job for Stephen.
Yeah, which is what he's wanting. And then honestly, if it's like, if he had extra hours, he could fill in and help with maintenance stuff. Because he does a really good job with them. He's a good bidder, so more than you know, you're not ever having to push him to do something.
Do you know Rob and I, reference what the red name was for sanitation last year?
No.
That's where.
You have a good crackdown, we just did an audit on it, because we just, we found a whole bunch of accounts that have been sliding and never getting billed, literally for.
I was right at 29, 29,000, because we budgeted 29,000 for this year.
Well, we found about 20 accounts have never been receiving bills, ever. And so we just shut them the next time.
Probably increase that probably to 35, and that would definitely. You would probably increase that probably to thirty-five and that would definitely be.
Thirty-five to forty. Most of the extra salary.
And that's with us only charging fifteen dollars a month for regular and twelve dollars for state service, whereas I think San Tex have twenty-five or twenty-six a month.
And I think that he, when I talked to them, that they're only working twelve hours now and doing the two hundred and thirteen thousand trips to the dump and he said that's on a, that's on an off week, it's usually about, it's between eight and twelve. Heavy end is twelve.
And with the trash.
So he's not gonna end up being, unless he has twelve hours.
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking at, you know, unless we want to bring one of them on full time, like she said, like Stephen, and have him work on maintenance as well.
I would give him full time, he doesn't want to be the supervisor department. He wasn't, doesn't have extra time, which I don't want to fill in.
Would actually be coming out way better if I did that and not getting, just because
Is there any other companies with Cherokee, is this the same company, Jasper, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, basically, they serve Jasper. I pulled up, I did look for other trash trucks when we pulled this stuff up about six months ago and I found one or two other ones that were within a few thousand dollars, but they're all over the country. I mean, he might be driving to Idaho.
These people service Dalton, they service Jasper, they service Canton, they service Hollis Springs. Well, that's good.
Most of the trucks are bigger than that. Yeah.
So they're about on going around here to deal with.
Yeah, and you can, I mean, you can go online and look up, but like I said, I did find other ones, but they were not close.
And that truck, Jasper's got some monster models, this one, take one of those.
Yeah.
He's close to the size of the one we got, the one we got a quarter. It's got a big, it's got a ton weight engine in it, so it's pretty big for it. Some is rated for under twenty-six thousand pounds.
Yeah, and he, I mean, he just brought his estimate on bigger than, like very close to what we have. We didn't, if this was stuff, these were the prices and stuff that he gave us, settled like back in May. Because I just had emailed and asked if the prices were still the same. So we can see if there's other stuff there that's something we're gonna do, but it's just, we need to.
When you got a small truck, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a dire time. We might could ask him to build, if I could get ahold of somebody at their company, could build, because that truck we got don't have that big of an engine. I mean, that's several thousand dollars more just for that engine than this.
I had that guy, the Andrew.
Smaller engine.
Lelebi, this guy, I think he's the one that actually came out, it's on the bottom of that quote, but I've got all the numbers, the other does.
Is there all the diesels or not, all the emissions, extra emissions that they're gonna do?
I'll take an action to send out a flyer, letting everybody know that we're looking at doing sanitation, providing citywide sanitation, mandatory citywide sanitation and providing the cans and feedback as well. That's out there. And that gives, Nathan, do you want to reach out to this guy or Kelsey's got another two that, that she's been working with, do you want to reach out to her and ask her some questions?
Yeah, if I could get a, get a number of somebody.
Yeah, it's the guy that came out, that's his number right there. This one, Billy, Billy.
Congrats on the call.
Yeah, he's the one that actually came out and talked to us and went with the truck.
Any other, any other action items from, from the sanitation service discussing? We'll move on down to new business, discuss and vote, adopt changes to property tax penalties and fees.
I'm sure talking to everyone else this one first, but. I ran into Tom Wilson a little while ago, I don't remember this. But there were changes, I guess, they were done as far as calculating the interest and penalties on property taxes. And our system is still set up with the old stuff and we just need to vote to implement the new rates. And I guess that it's recalculated every January, because I called Cherokee to see what their current rate was and she said currently it's point six four eight five. It will change in January based on, I guess, the prime rate, the federal reserve does it, plus three percent or something and they come up with a rate, whatever that rate is and stuff. So we just need to basically proclaim touch up and just get it up to where it's supposed to be.
And then we would, we would hit the council vote on this yearly then?
I think you pretty much just adopt it, maybe a blanket as a policy if that's what you're gonna update your, your fee schedule.
So you would update.
To follow the, the prime, the federal prime rate.
Twenty yearly basis or do you need to do it every year?
Does this basically mean taking that turkey back there?
Yeah.
I have to look at the wall and see, it may provide, do it once or it's automatic.
Yeah, but let's know, we'll go ahead and we can vote to, to approve one here now and then if you could let us know if it needs to be done yearly or if it's a one-time thing. Do you may have any questions about that?
Is, is sign time updated, that turkey, is that time updated?
It was a hall, it was House Bill.
Yeah, I've read all of those.
Eighty, nine, sixty, that's basically one of the, you know, like an option.
We're technically supposed to be following that, if the fee schedule.
Can I get a motion to approve, adopt the, the property tax penalties and fee schedule?
I might get a motion to adopt the penalty fees there just.
Can I give a second?
Sorry.
On paper, unanimous? Second up is discuss and vote on fire prevention proclamation.
I guess we could have put this up here, other fire, the fire prevention, for the motion for proclamation.
Yeah.
So you can't vote that up.
I'm gonna have to take that microphone off.
Yeah, it needs to be closer. We're talking about the, you know, the twenty-twenty proclamation for, yeah, the
Fire prevention proclamation.
You said, that's what I asked her, I said, did you write this up? And she said, no, I got it from ten.
Our fire marshal office sent it out to all the cities and will be adopted tomorrow at the court commission week. Just a bit, fire commission week that's coming up in October, it's the second week, first or second week.
I think we did this last year as well.
They, they stay on top of it and get it done, get it out of the, around here.
I got one quick, when they gonna lift burning paint?
September first. It's always from April first to, to.
October first.
I think September, or, I think October first is when it's starting burning. Yeah, October first.
Can I get a motion to approve the fire prevention proclamation?
I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Can I get a second? Therefore, I, still be a repair of the city of Nelson due here by the plan, October the fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty, as the fire prevention week throughout the city and urge all people of Nelson to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during the fire prevention week twenty twenty and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Cherokee Fire and Emergency Services. Next up is discuss and vote on building permits. Okay, last, last meeting that we had, I asked for everybody to review what we have currently and if you wanted any changes or if you wanted to, had any questions to get back with Kelsey. Nobody's gotten back with her again. We put together this small list here that best fits, what I feel, that best fits our, our small city. So please take a minute and review that. Permits needed for new single-family residents, additions, bedrooms, bathrooms, family rooms, decks, garages, et cetera. Renovation work, replacing windows, remodelling kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. Basement finishes, storage sheds, detached accessories, structures two hundred square feet or larger. Plans designed by a professional will be required if the structure is two thousand feet or larger.
I think this is what Cherokee.
That's Cherokee's.
Next one was, it specifies that you don't, all around, and then basically the same, with the exception of, if you, you didn't want your one and a half.
Now, are we talking about these little broad sheds, you get the permit for them, open sheds?
I don't think it's, I think it's anything that's, that's over two hundred square feet, we need to know about it and we need to approve it so we don't have, so we make sure that the, our city guidelines and ordinances and policies are being followed. So anything that's like permanent, I know we have one down here that say it's on walks, it can be removed at any time, we didn't need a permit for that.
Like those little cardboard, they, they have to get a permit for them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a.
It's not an enclosed thing, yeah.
And like decks, existing decks, you can replace that without a permit.
You can replace your boarders.
So as long as it's not increasing the footprint, is what the pickings are telling me. So this was just to give some clarification and they need any, they're saying.
Somebody has a deck that's eight by six and they want it eight by ten, they're most likely not gonna come in for that.
Pickings is like ten hundred square foot, if you're larger than two hundred square foot, you need to get a permit. We still need to have, if a homeowner is coming here to get a permit, if he's haven't done, or he's wasn't having, they're not really gonna check it, not by a mandate, but.
And a lot of people have changed, I added a deck here, I didn't know it was, that you had to have a permit. I didn't get it, and that was, the form was made, but still, a lot of people want to wear that.
So if it's too, smaller than two hundred square foot, that's like pickings required. Perhaps what they tell them.
They tell me I should increase the footprint and see, and that's again, that falls under grade. And that was the whole point of this, was just to give an idea.
So we can add that, so storage sheds, detached accessory structures, two hundred, you can add a deck. There you go, just add decks here.
Over two hundred square feet.
If you're adding, if you're adding additional space to it, an additional two hundred square feet, then you need a, you're gonna need a plan.
But like suddenly turn your deck out from your house and replace it with a new, then you shouldn't have to have a permit for that.
No, well, what they told me was that if you were, if you tore it off and you're replacing it and you're on the same footprint that you did.
Well, that's like doors and windows, you already got doors and windows in your house, you shouldn't have to have permits, but I knew doors and windows.
But it was, if you replace more than fifty percent.
That's what, that's what, down here at the bottom, Ball Ground did the same thing, but they said it'd remove fifty percent of them. And that's what, this wasn't our list, this is why, I mean, this was Cherokee, this was what they have on their website. And Higgins, I couldn't find any where they specified, yeah. I know the last one talking, they were making a list and Ball Ground had a number sent to me that had all of those, but then they had specifications and they, as far as the doors and windows.
No, I think this is for your typical homeowner, replacing some windows and doors. This is more like for, for remodel work. So if somebody come in and they said, oh, I'm gonna remodel that house, I'm just going, good, everything, you know, I'm gonna take every window out. If we don't have something in place, then it, then we have no avenue to have an inspection. I think that's what that's for.
One is if you're doing power and plumbing and stuff.
Yeah.
If you're having a licensed person turn in and try to get, because I know that there was so many down there, ran into that because the.
The power company will turn it off, turn it off, do that permit. And I'm the one that's sending them, because I'm just saying that they pass it on to get it.
That's another thing like our condition, so your condition doubles that.
How did they get a permit for that? There's AC companies. Well, there's AC companies that call me to get a permit and then, then I'll see other companies that are out doing it and fixing it. I'm not gonna stop and make it off for it.
Well, I mean, if you're replacing existing property, why should you get a permit?
I agree with you. But I understand.
That's just another experience, if somebody's gonna pay a four thousand dollar, have it done. Then you want to pay another expense to have somebody.
So maybe, that's a good one, but we can add that, so if you're replacing.
Existing.
Yeah.
There's some, well, he asked you this though, because there's some companies that, like, and I just ran into this.
But that's another thing, if a homeowner.
The companies wants it.
If they do, that's fine, I mean, if they don't really come out and check it, that'd be fine. Like they have to go for the homeowner or whoever, everybody wants it, yeah, but.
Yeah, somebody calls to get it, I'm not gonna tell them if you have it, but I don't wanna, I'm not gonna fix somebody's house and not gonna tell them, stop it, like.
Yeah, we can put that down there as a not needed.
And it's a basic, maybe if it's not.
Wouldn't go back and change some of this, I haven't had a chance to go, you can't go talking about that in my home, kind of, and things going on.
Yeah, that's what we, and we did, we did a lot of the, we did a lot of the work. We went and, we went and checked to see what Higgins had, we went and checked to see what Cherokee's had and we came up with the best case scenario with what, you know, you definitely know that you want permits for new single-family residents. So we all agree on that. Then additional bedrooms, bathrooms, family rooms, decks and garages, if people are adding those, because those are gonna require electrical outlets and stuff, so you definitely want that.
Well, decks, plus some of that two hundred square feet thing.
Yeah. And then renovation work, replacing windows, remodelling kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. They say you need a thing for that. I don't want to be, let's remodel kitchens and stuff.
Yeah, and if you're just upgrading something, I don't know. But I mean, if a homeowner wants you to do it, I don't see a problem with it. If you're gonna have it inspected by really or whoever, that's sort of another mandate to really find out if they need it.
Yeah, they, I mean, and I agree, I don't, I personally don't want to be told what to do in my house. I'm just saying.
I mean, you're not increasing the square footage or nothing like that, it's gonna affect taxes.
No, and obviously, I don't care where or another, it's one of those, sometimes it ends where people call and ask me, other than, I don't know.
How do you feel about the renovation, Nathan, replacing windows, remodelling kitchens and bathrooms? Think they need a permit for that? If it's you're remodeling your own home?
Yeah, I mean, we got two different, like you got a homeowner that's living in it and you got somebody that's renovating a whole house, you know, it's kind of two different situations there.
Your standard would have to be the same though. It's the work, if the work requires a permit, the work requires a permit, because then you start getting it to do all the.
But even, even remodeling a kitchen, it's one, who cares?
It's just gotta be clear.
It has to be one law.
Here's the standard.
If somebody's remodelling a kitchen and a bathroom, they're gonna be making it better than what it was.
It's just hard to define what that is. It's hard to define the point at which it starts to need to require a permit. We can work on that.
I think it does, so if you're, if you're doing an addition versus just to remodel, changing out your toilets, changing out your.
The difference in doing remodels too, because I've gone, I've been on this end of, of the job for like twenty years. When they do kitchen renovations, it's usually not going in, just changing up countertops and painting cabinets, it's gutting the kitchen, you're moving the sink, you're changing the outlets, you're, the whole.
Well, it might start getting, the question's probably whether you're getting them to work that is required to be done by a, by a licensed professional.
Yes. And most of the time, you've got, you've got, most of the jobs I've been on, you have the plumbers there, you have the electricians there, you have, you know, I'm the last person that's usually in there.
And that might be the danger, that if it requires, if it's worked.
That's what I was thinking, so if you.
If it requires the services of a licensed professional, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Because even now, contractors have to be licensed as well to do certain types of work and so if it falls under that type of work, that's the kind of work they should be getting a permit for.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I like that better than, than the way that's worked.
We've got something on that. I'll take you on.
Some of the stuff we're running to, it gets down to what he was talking about on license builders, you know, you get people that, that buy some of these older homes and they flip them. You know, if they're contractors and know what they're doing, that's good, but it's the quality, what's going into a renovation. You know, somebody comes in and does shoddy work and then they sell it and put it off on somebody, being, "We're coming in, hey, we're finding quality wire."
And maybe that's some other wording that needs to be in there, if, you know, depending on, for your personal property that you...
I think it's, that's how the permit process ever started, because of substandard quality. And it's now, when you get permitted, if it gets inspected, there are insurance that the work's getting done. That if it was to get sold to somebody later, they're gonna buy and show the work, because what the permit process is all about, is making sure that if you're renovating your own, you're doing it right. You know, and you're not, you still find wires put together will take occasion if you put, uh, wire nuts on them. So it's, it's the quality of the work being done, if you can ensure that somebody's doing the work, that's doing, you know, that knows what they're doing versus somebody that's trying to make a dollar and just throw it together, and then they put it off to somebody else, they got all kinds of problems. So again, I think that's where the permit process started, is to make sure that if you're renovating your kitchen, you got somebody that knows what they're doing while they're renovating your kitchen. I'm all about doing what I wanna do with my home, but you need to think about the next person that owns that home, what have they done?
Sure, even if you do it for yourself.
Right, I'm doing it right. So that's, that's the key thing behind, anytime you're renovating these homes, a lot of stuff that we see when we go in there, we're dealing with fires and trying to find why, that is, well, they don't load it up that breaker too hard. You got a twenty-amp breaker and they had thirty amps for the power running for it. So, that's what it gets down to when you're permitting. Do you have inspection process here for your building? That's what it's all about, you got somebody overseeing that renovation to make sure it's being done. You know, you have your home, but you may sell a home to somebody else that's gonna buy a problem, if it's not done right. That's what it's all about, the permit process, is somebody's watching you. Give you an example, my sister was having that rebuilt in the last year, just got to give a really good deal, well, it was a really good deal. She spent ten thousand dollars worth of work and had it with that, and they realized it wasn't good built. She didn't know it wasn't a contractor.
I think code now, code now quite some decks, but I understand, where apparently they've been before.
So that's what getting people hurt, decks are collapsing, that's the reason to get them inspected, you know, you got so many others to do it. That's what the permit process is all about, to make sure the work's being done right. Not, not for, not only for your own safety, but for the people that buys your home, selling it.
Brand, all that, at our house, just stuff that was...
That's what the permit process is for, make sure...
It's just they never, old mayor that lived in our house did not pull permits to do work.
I just want to say that in there.
I mean, you want me to look at some language and see if there's something that kind of...
Yeah, let's look at that.
Incomplishing that would set the standard, then maybe some specific examples.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Um, and then basement refinishes, um, everybody agree that we need permits for that?
Yeah, there's somebody doing it now, or it's basically, I think that's usually the issue, so that, I finished basement, they want in it.
Because you can look for it.
It's like wiring.
They gotta do it now, and honestly, you know, you'd never know that, that...
And then the next thing was storage sheds, detached accessory structures, two hundred square feet or larger. Plans designed by a professional will be required if the structure is two thousand square feet or larger, and...
That was a Cherokee requirement.
That's a Cherokee requirement, yes, and I think our ordinance says, um, that if our, our square footage for an accessory building is based on the square footage of the home, it can't exceed fifty percent. So that part wouldn't be in there, the part that would be in there is, uh, storage sheds, attached accessory structures, that's two hundred square feet or larger. And then we would add that it would meet our code. Do they agree on that?
So what about two thousand square feet or larger?
That was from Cherokee's, it's like, this was the stuff, like, it's on the top, it says Cherokee, this is the stuff that Cherokee require.
I don't know that we...
That still requires a permit, they also require plans, a design, uh...
Yeah, like, auto cap.
Yeah, so, so, most of our, so with, with the fifty percent rule, most of our houses are not over three thousand square feet, which you wouldn't be able to build with a fifteen hundred square foot building anyway. So if we wanna add something like that, that says, um, professional drawings required for anything over fifteen hundred square feet or a thousand, maybe that, or we could just leave our, leave our zoning code ordinances there, it says fifty percent, because that's really all they can build.
Well, I need to... Yeah, because I mean, that's getting into our, your, maybe block, auto cap drawings for stuff.
Maybe we can insert our, our zoning case with what it says.
Yeah, it's gonna provide inspection.
Yeah. Yeah, it says, I mean, it would, so, and then if we just put up, and where they have plans designed by a professional will be required if the structure is two thousand square feet or less, we just add our, our ordinance, what it says, which is, um, storage buildings, et cetera, cannot exceed the fifty percent of this principal building. Some of the rework data. Okay. And then permits not needed for repairing existing, repairing or replacing existing heat air. Um, wallpaper, painting, tiling, carpeting cabinets, countertops, um, storage sheds, storage sheds, playhouses less than two hundred square feet, fences not over seven feet, um, and I think our ordinance says over eight feet, so we may wanna change that to eight feet instead of seven.
Well, it doesn't specify any permit, it just says you don't want to have fences over anything.
Yeah, so I don't think people need, I don't think the fence, but that's up to you guys, how do y'all feel about it?
I feel that's as you do.
Okay, all right, the next one would be retaining walls that are not over four feet high, we don't need a permit for those.
And now as far as the fences, they need to stay out of the set, set pass and stuff.
Yeah, we would follow our ordinance, we'd follow our, our ordinances and stuff on that, so... Um, take this home and just review it, if you guys, um, we'll, we'll make these, um, changes and get a copy down here for you guys to, to review what changes we've had. And then if there's anything else you guys can think of, just review our ordinances, I would encourage that. And then if there's something you feel like we need to, to add in there, we check out to us. We'll update this and we'll put it back on the agenda for next month.
That you could change that, that more. Well, I mean, maybe, so...
Now, I think it's just one, it's just a basic, just some idea, because there's nothing, it's literally nothing. And you're not gonna ever have a list as vast as everything, because there's always gonna be a situation that, and it means you work for a jurisdiction, there's always gonna be a situation that turns out that, you know, it's not gonna fit the rules or something, so you're gonna have to ask at different times. But it just gives some basic guidelines to go by. And even then, their website says the same thing, it's not like if your answer isn't here for each other, it's...
And we just wanna make sure that we're not, we're not overstepping what we already have as far as ordinances, that we don't make those changes to.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm wondering, obviously, whether I'm gonna get a license, so and so, can it be, just give your answer back and check?
I'd probably just do a thirty percent, I mean, a thirty dollar, whatever the base permit fee is in October's case. And that was part of the reason for changing our fee schedule, because the owner would have hit every single thing and just give...
That's why, same mark on ours, something like, they're not gonna be able to do that, but you're willing, they're not gonna check it, and that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
But they, even if it ain't, because...
I think that's a service that we should promote.
Yeah, and, you know, I bet not with anyone.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Totally.
I mean, if you, you get that anyway, when you, when you get a permit, right?
Yeah, I mean, the homeowner being in Wolf's apartment or something, that's...
He'll get it, he'll get a permit, like, somebody wants it, I'm not gonna tell him he can't get it, but...
Okay, well, we'll get that updated, get it back on for next month, again, for your, for your, as only your real ordinances, if you, if you think of anything that needs to change, what is that? Discussing, next up is discussing vote on the old city truck.
Well, I checked that truck out. Check what?
What's that?
Computer's blowed out, hey, I get it used, though, for twelve hundred bucks, but there ain't no use in it.
Oh, my goodness.
James, is your favorite truck?
I thought he was about to say, we can save it.
He's got a sentimental...
He's got a sentimental attachment to that.
Hey, it's bloody good, you know, once you get it running.
No floorboard in it, but it was, uh...
It's got like a whole...
All like that, you know?
The seats gone in it.
Ton of engines that, not, uh, a Nissan.
Oh, yeah.
Four-cylinder.
Yeah, me and Larry Paul put these sleeves and everything.
Well, we either need to sell it or auction it. And we're paying the insurance on it.
You're in, interrupt me.
We're paying insurance on it.
Yeah, we're gonna get rid of it.
So it's got a cracked windshield, the brakes are too tight, the batteries are dead, it's got all the dash lights are on, the dumpster thing isn't, isn't working, which could be just a switch or something on it.
When is Cherokee do their next auction, their next auction?
My best Jeff Doughtson usually does it.
Jeff Doughtson does them, though.
Yeah, I just thought of that, so...
They're making Ricky, and they might got nothing to do, but you said they need junk already, charge the batteries, we're, we're taking it up on the league.
Take them there, but it's, what if, we don't know where it came from, we're not taking that.
Our safety, I think they would, but not they would hear that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think they would ever...
It costs just a percentage, you know?
I think they take ten percent.
But they don't bring fifteen dollars, he sells.
Yeah, there's no reserve, but at this point, we're paying insurance on something business city.
What's the policy, what's the policy about the city, um, selling it?
There's sealed bids.
Bids, I mean, that's fine, that, that auction's perfect for it, and you aren't worried about all that.
You don't, we don't have it now, or you wanna think about it?
Let's just go ahead and put it in for...
Auction?
Auction, or C L B, if you want to, we have to surplus that before we put it on, that's what you're going to do, do surplus.
You could run an add in the paper, just to do sealed bids on it first, before, if, if the auction's not till April.
Yeah, we'll check, see when the auction is, if it's not been made pretty quick, and then seal it, it ain't gonna write nothing for it.
Okay, let's see if we get this right, so let's go ahead and, um, unvote on, um, two, two things. One, we will check on, check on the auction, and then if the auction is not gonna be until next April, we'll look at doing sealed bids. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve what you just said.
I guess I did. Thank you very much, we'll take that as an action, and, yeah, working on that. Uh, the next thing is for discussion...
I'll be favored.
I'll be favored? You know, it's, it's April sometimes.
Put you in on, you know?
White keeper's day, thank you, James.
Okay, the next thing is gonna be, um, discussing vote on hazard pay policy. I know that Kelsey and Miranda has been on this, we, do, what was the outcome of that?
Well, G M A said we have that one on file.
We need to go ahead and have that on file, just because of the SCARES Act, um, because if we wanted, would have wanted to do hazard pay, or if something happened to the future and we wanna do hazard pay for our guys, um, then you would need to have this on, on file, so that way you could, you could...
Say it was there prior to...
Yeah, you could go ahead and do that, yeah. Um, but this is something that I think all municipalities and counties have been doing, during the whole pandemic thing, yeah. Um, but while I'm talking, I would like to, thank you, you have done so much work in regards to the whole CARES Act and stuff. You've really put in some extra...
You can all your stuff and just plug in City of Nelson.
Well, no, I ain't saying that, I'm saying all the extra... They're submitting and gathering and working tirelessly to get everything done and make sure we get what we...
And I know I told her that, I had it publicly, said it, but she has gone above and beyond, going on this...
She really has, yeah.
She's working...
You work people, she be able to raise.
Well, I can say that she don't deserve it, so there's that.
Okay, so, um, take a look, read over the hazard pay policy here, um, it, it looks...
It was very generic, basically pulled all the, whatever, Carroll County, whatever the other county was, it was like then...
Yeah, this is pretty much the same thing that all the other municipalities have, have, it's basically come from G M A, pretty much. And then, um, it's just something that we just need to have on...
File.
On file.
There's supposed to be two more rounds in this tier three and stuff.
Yeah, and, and we really don't know what's gonna happen with that whole funding thing, so...
Brody had a chance to look that over. So again, the purpose of this is to, that we need, the city does need something in place for hazard, for hazard pop-up, hazard duty pay policy. And the second is, is this is a generic format from the G M A. So... Can I get a motion to approve the hazard pay policy from G M A?
I can motion, I can pray that. I'll say, for you, like...
May I get a second? Can I have all in favor? You can answer, thank you very much. Um, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting, can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? So I need a second.
I'll take this motion.
Can I get all in favor, you can answer, thank you.